And here again, as we do this summer, we have the ROTC candidates from, our cadets from Garfield High School, and they are going to lead us in the pledge.
Freezing, collies. Here, collies. Ready, cut. Freezing, arms. Close, collies. Ready, two. Right shoulder, arms. Ready, hut, close.
Do you want to introduce the major?
Major Reed.
Everyone's had opportunity in the meeting.
Those of you who've been here for a while know Major Zink has retired. Major Donnie Reed here is taking his place when he comes in. We're getting started. Fire, fire, fellas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. In the past few meetings, we've had quite an agenda, so I put you all off on community and school reflections. So this evening, I'm inviting you to go ahead and speak about whatever you have been holding back for the last few weeks. It's been a little crazy, if you could remember, because we have to go back into our memory banks. Now you have nothing, really.
I only have one.
Okay.
Which is easy to remember. Bookdell's graduation, and the graduation was well. I was very proud and pleased of all the scholarships that the kids received, as usual. And there was one young lady, and I know I was going to forget her name, but she got $180,000 in scholarship money alone, just herself, and it was amazing. She deserved every bit of it. She's a hard worker, one of the top students at Bookdell High School. But it was nice, again, to see all those students graduating and moving on, and we wish the best for them. Thank you.
See, I put them off too long. Now I've got nothing more to tell us. All right. We all had graduations, and I know that all of them were well done, and we're so proud of everyone that stood up and graduated. It was a very nice offense. We have no requests to address the board today. We have no communications and recognition, so I would ask for a motion for the approval of our meeting minutes.
So move.
Can we do them both at once? We can do them both at once, yes. All right. Any comments or concerns or questions about those? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
All right. Sitting in today for Mr. James, we have Deb Ful from Business Affairs, as Helen is also out of town, so she is here to help us out with personnel.
Madam President, I have before me, for your consideration, 60 personnel recommendations and Supplement 1 for certification of the graduation list for the class of 2014. These recommendations are in the proper form, and I seek your approval.
All right. Moved to properly seconded. Any questions on personnel today? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Madam President, I would like to ask Kathy McVeigh from our Human Resources Department to introduce the new high school principal appointment, Brian Hopkins.
Mr. Hopkins, would you stand, please? We are pleased to welcome Mr. Byron Hopkins as a new member of Akron Public Schools. He earned his bachelor's degree in business administration through Field College in Greenville, Pennsylvania, and then obtained his master's degree in vocational business education from Kent State University, and his education specialist degree from Cleveland State. He began his career in education as a business teacher for South Cleveland Lindhurst City Schools, where he taught over college-bound and career-technical students. He then served as a teacher for the Architectic Academy, alternative education program in the South Cleveland Lindhurst School System. At Architectic Academy, he worked with traditional and at-risk students to achieve their goal of graduation. Mr. Hopkins then became a teacher in the Business Academy, Rush High School in Lindhurst, where he implemented several projects such as a new business program, problem-based curriculum, tools for 21st century technology, and articulation agreements for local colleges and universities. Mr. Hopkins then entered administration and served for two years as deputy principal at Whitney Young School in the Cleveland School District, and then he became principal of Cleveland's East Tech School, where he remained until 2013, when he was appointed principal of John Marshall High School. He's been recommended tonight as a high school principal with Akron Schools, and he'll be the principal of Kemore High School. Congratulations, Brian.
I want to thank the board for presenting with this opportunity to join Akron City Schools, and I want to introduce my family, which is my huge support system that I have with me today. To my right is my wife Tara Hopkins, to my left is my son Tyler, and then my daughter Ashlyn. Again, I just want to thank the board for presenting with this tremendous opportunity of joining Akron Public Schools. So look forward to meeting this. Thank you.
Madam President, at this time, I have before me, for your consideration, three motions
and 11 resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So move. Second.
Moved to properly seconded. Any questions?
I just want to make a comment, and this is nothing new, but the rent we're approving for the STEM High School, I will be voting for it because we're contractually obligated to, but I still think of all the room we have in the buildings here in Akron Public Schools, we should be paying rent for classroom space.
And it does suggest that, I think, we're going to have to come up with a solution sooner rather than later. I mean, at $500, almost half a million dollars a year to get rid of the building for $13 million, and then to pay back half a million a year in rent space is a little steep, so, and that's something that I know we discussed when we were looking at it, so we knew it was a possibility, but it probably is something we need to put on the table.
That was my comments as well. That's a lot of money, and if we are there for any more length of time, we could have built a, almost a brand-new building for that particular study of STEM. So, again, we need to revisit, if there's some way to revisit it. I don't know how we're able to do that since when a contract, I don't even know how long the contract is. Do you remember?
Ten years.
It is ten years. Yeah, so that is, yeah. Okay.
We can get out of it before now.
Yeah, there's an out in there. So there's something.
We kind of had this conversation a real long time. We kind of knew, some of this, so this is not.
Yeah, it's not new. It just hits you again when you see it.
Yeah, but, I mean, I think we saw it before, so it's not a new thing, but I just wanted to say that. For the record, worth revisiting, but I think we had the same reaction we saw before.
And we held up the agreement a few times to discuss that, and it was a very broad range. And we saw numbers from the low end to the high end, but...
The only thing I would add to that is, you know, when you talk about real estate, what do you always hear? Location, location, location. And the location of the STEM High School is the reason it's where it is, and it's the reason we're paying rent, because the co-location with the University of Akron is what makes it what it is. So we can, we do need to keep looking at that and not close that door, but that is the reason that it is what it is.
I would disagree with that. It's the programming, not the location.
True, but after their junior year, they're pretty much on the college campus.
Well, we have a building on campus we could already use that we don't have to pay rent for.
True. It's worth looking at. All right. Any more discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Madam President, I have before me, for your consideration, 29 Business Affairs recommendations. I would like to change the effective dates for items 24 and 25 to change the ending of the service date from June 30th, 2015, to December 31st, 2014, as a recommendation from the department director. I and I seek your approval, and they are in the proper form.
Second.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Number seven. I apologize, I didn't get a chance to ask this before, but for the prevention intervention and evaluation, is that a special education?
Yes. Karen, can you talk about Helen Rowland?
Item seven, please.
What do you engage Helen Rowland for? Prevention, intervention, evaluation?
Which agenda are we on?
Oh, we're on the Business Affairs Agenda, item seven.
I don't think you should be my age.
Is that for...
It says general funding, that's not...
Oh, okay. It's... Perkins?
Perkins.
I'm going to say Perkins.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Interesting. Anyway. Okay, I apologize. It is for consulting for the Perkins Grants and stuff like that, so, all righty. I apologize. Karen, I'm sorry.
At the room, I'm like, wow.
Thank you. Karen, anything else? Okay. The transportation. Item nineteen. Item nineteen? Yes. That is the student in this district that only can receive education at the School of Blind in Columbus, Ohio, and as he is eligible for transport, we are obligated to take him to the school outside of Columbus on a daily basis, and that's the cost of that contract. And we have hired suburban school transportation to take them. And we've been doing this for this particular student for a number of years.
Ms. Wolf, can you tell us a little bit about, one of the things that's in item 14 is the service agreement for wireless teledata at Essex. Can you tell us a little bit about what's going on at Essex with the program there?
I was asked in the early part of the spring to go out to Stewart, where the early learning program is located, to evaluate the parking lot, because we had changed some of the focus of the program where most home visits were done at home, they were now being done at the location of the building, where the students were also in class and the staff were parking. And understand, I have 14 vans that transport students to that location. Stewart, when it was originally built, was a walk-to school, so there isn't a very large parking lot. So as we looked over this idea of how to address the parking situation and the proper transport of students and staff through the parking lot, we came up with two ideas. One was to resurface a grassy area towards the back and ask the city to open up one of its back streets so you could exit through that, and I put that information into Mr. Gasper's office. The second was to realize that they had outgrown the building. They are servicing 290 students and have the option of actually getting 125 more seats. So when talking to the superintendent, when I got back, I said to him that I was wondering, should we, you know, open another campus, and I thought Essex would be ideal location. So he asked me to make arrangements for Karen Lydon Anderson and Pat Cronin to go over to Essex. We did a full tour of the building and realized that the kindergarten wing would be absolutely ideal for the program. And that is the wing on, if you're facing the building, it's the wing on the right-hand side. It had the appropriate space for the children and had the appropriate lavatories, et cetera, that would do this. So upon return, Mrs. Anderson went ahead and gave to the superintendent a recommendation that she would like to expand this program, knowing that we would use that wing, the office area, the multiple-purpose room, and the kitchen to feed the students. And they understood that since we are using the left side of the building or the older student classrooms to help the Firestone Marching Band, that would be off-limits to them, because that's what they're doing to use that property while Firestone is being rebuilt. We successfully, we're told, to go ahead and get this started, and we had a meeting among the support staff to get the building ready. Mr. Fletcher and his staff are working on the roof and cleaning the building, and I was asked to obviously put back in the telecommunications, because all that's left is just for security, and the internet and everything else, and that's what this recommendation is for. We need to rewire the building so we can make it ready for them to do it. We are thinking there's a possibility that ODE, and we're waiting on word for them, that we might get 125 additional spaces for this program. We also think that some of our regular buildings, that house some of our current classrooms in the buildings, could free up space by relocating some of the students to this location as well for regular K through five or K through six education. And our goal is to get the building ready and to have it open the day after Labor Day.
There's 125 additional seats. Is that on top of the additional grant money that we already received?
Yes.
So we received the grant, then we received additional monies, and now this is potentially...
We received an early chocolate expansion grant that initiated us 157 slots, and those slots were added in the same competition, additional 100 slots. We have a total of 257 slots, which is phenomenal. They were very, they were very purple in terms of additional slots to districts. We did have the space, we had the history, and then in terms of transportation, because all of our students are trans, most of our students are transported out, it was just ideal for us. We're very excited about it and it's ready to go.
And so now this is an additional 125 on top of the...
It's actually, it was original 157 slots, this is an additional 100 slots. The 125 comes from, we still have a few slots to fill with the remaining 157, but they're filling up very quickly. We're working hard throughout the summer.
It's really great.
It is, because it truly does, I mean, once a student attends a preschool program, they're very likely to have positive experience in the remainder of the district.
And do we know about the sustainability of these grant funds? Are they going to...
That's, that's...
As much as we can look into the state's crystal ball.
Once we've ingrained the slots, they have never taken slots back. So if we just look at past history, it's very likely that we'll maintain these slots.
I mean, the more and more we continue to talk about the importance of early education, I imagine that it's going to get a lot more.
And the property also has two playground areas that are huge for this group of students. And we are very careful to make sure that we know the traffic pattern for the staff that will park there, as well as the vans and stuff that will deliver the students to the location. It is truly an ideal location. Karen? Something else that they have that was just outstanding, we couldn't have asked you, is they had observation rooms, which was unbelievable, that were already there. So when we look at some of our low incident student population, looking at some of our psychologists interns, it's a perfect setup, so I'm just thrilled to have it going, but the observation rooms both sold me, in addition to the traffic pattern for the multiple vans. So it's just great.
We kind of, we love the idea, too. My question is, do we have any idea what we do at Stewart?
Oh, no, Stewart is remaining. This is an additional site.
Oh.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, so...
No, this is an additional building on West Akron. You have to know where. No, no, no. Thank you.
The opposite, we're filling an empty hole.
I like the program all the more.
Out of curiosity, if, when Firestone's built and the marching band has vacated, what would be the opportunity? I mean, how many more kids could you put into that program and that building?
To be honest with you, to modify or do something else, one other thought that the superintendent had, and he had talked to Karen and I about that, was to offer some space to Head Start as well. So those are some of the other, we would have the whole other wing to deal with.
Couple of years to let happen.
Absolutely. At least, I don't think, am I correct, Mr. Fletcher? Firestone won't open until, we think, 2016? 16?
Yeah, and I think that's really one of the benefits, too, that you nailed it about having children in early education programs right in the school buildings, because the transition is much easier, it helps parents in the transition, we don't have to, so it's a good, it's a win-win, win-win situation.
They'll trust.
And I love Head Start.
Yes, very. Me, too.
He's a Head Start baby.
Wonderful for those kids.
Madam President, I'd like to go back to item seven. Mr. Lawson, there's a question.
Could you restate your question? I know I...
I was just wanting a little bit of information.
All right. Helen Rowland is working with our Plato credit recovery summer school, as well as the teaching and supporting of the instructional staff that is using Plato in the classroom as a curriculum tool.
Okay.
So it's a continuation. Plato is an online credit recovery, and our online courses that are offered through the district. So if staff has a challenge, she's there to help make sure they...
Thank you very much.
Plato has helped a lot of kids as well. I mean, I've known a lot of kids in the past few years who probably would have lost from, we probably would have lost from Akron Public Schools, but due to Plato allowing them to get the opportunity to catch up and get back with their class, because some kids use that as to catch up, get back with the class and graduate with their class, so I think it's been very beneficial for our district.
Thank you.
Any further questions are on this business fair? Thank you for your questions.
Can we do a motion on the second?
I think we did those, yes. We just need a roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. As far as the president's report, I have sad news to report, unfortunately. I was formed over the weekend, and then Mr. Williamson reminded me of the passing of our wonderful volunteer that we did have to board not too long ago, back in March, Mr. Conley, who passed away this past weekend, and his, his family, we, of course, mourned with his family, not just his, his blood relations, but also his family at Piper, who were greatly saddened by his passing, and all of the kids who truly loved him. So just wanted to mention that he will be missed. And he was, of course, of nature, who grabbed my hand with great firmness, as ill as he was when he was here, and said, "Promise me you will get me more volunteers." So we'll think of Mr. Conley today. No treasurers report today?
No.
Committee reports? Let's see, we have some from legal, and I think we have some catch-up for sure for finance.
I have for the third reading, Policies 1145, which is new retirement of board employees, Policy 3145, which is new retirement of board employees, and Policy 4145, which is revised retirement of board employees. And I make a motion that we accept this, this third reading.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Any other committee reports? Go ahead.
Just the donations, I'd like to thank certain people here. Cash donation for Kevin CLC, cash from Diane Ferris to ECLC for the marching band, for the band. Cash donation from Debbie, Cheryl, and Alfred Naraway to the NIF STEM Middle School for art supplies for the visual arts. A larger cash donation for First Congregational Church to, it says Macon, I'm assuming that's Mason CLC, for the purchase of a couple of smart boards. We had 60 game tickets from Akron Rubber Ducks to Project Rise. We had various school supplies and books from Feed the Children to Project Rise. Clothing items from Harry Maya Atticari to Finley CLC, and two harps from Martha McConie to Hattie CLC. Thank you to everybody who donates to the causes there.
Is there any unfinished business? If not, we do have new business. As you know, and he's not gone yet, that's not why Jack isn't here. Don't panic. We are going to have, be losing Jack to retirement and moving back toward home. So today, the board is going to present a resolution, or would like to present a resolution, to hire an interim treasurer while we're searching for Mr. Pearson's replacement. It's not easy to replace someone who's been here for 21 years, so we want to make sure we get the right person in place and not just quickly, you know, throw someone into the job. So I would like to suggest someone make a motion that we hire Cliff Reinhardt as our interim treasurer for the Akron Public Schools.
So move.
Moved to properly seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhardt is here today, and I have the pleasure of reading his file today. As you know, Jack Pearson will be retiring from Akron Public Schools in a few weeks. Although it will be very difficult to replace Jack, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Cliff Reinhardt, who will be stepping into Jack's shoes as our interim treasurer. Mr. Reinhardt has an impressive education background. He earned his bachelor's degree in economics from Ohio Wesleyan University, and his MBA in finance from the University of Rochester's William E. Simon Graduate School of Business. Mr. Reinhardt comes to us with 24 years of experience as a school district treasurer. Among the schools where he has served as treasurer are Magador Local Schools, Black River Local Schools, North Royalton City Schools, and Willoughby Eastlake City Schools. He is one of only two school treasurers selected to serve on the Auditor of State's Northeast Regional Advisory Committee. He's also been a participating member in the school district's union negotiations teams. In addition to working with school districts, Mr. Reinhardt has also held management positions with the HMO Health Ohio, Kaiser Permanente, Cardinal Services, and East Macodak Company. In these roles, he has achieved over 20 years of experience in all phases of finance and private industry. As a member of OASBO, Mr. Reinhardt has served on the legislative, licensure, and professional development committees, and as a seminar director for eight years. We welcome Mr. Reinhardt to Akron Public Schools and are looking forward to working with him. We hope he finds the time he spends here enjoyable.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
You have a Jack presence. You have a Jack presence.
Any other new business? Am I going to shout? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I have new business, but I missed something before. You know, this summer, the Health and Progress program, they have all these students from around middle schools that go on to ninth grade. They had a program this year, where, I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Halasa. She just did a wonderful job. The kids at the end culminated into some presentations at North High School. And just the kids, just over that week period of time, they've been to Cleveland Science Center, North University of Akron, UConn, is that right? Kent State University, University of Akron, for just them to share and articulate their experiences and know where they want to go, what they want to do in this field. It was just amazing to see. I was blessed to have my daughter, who's in middle school, who's going to STEM High School, Kyra, who was participating in that, but overall, the program is just wonderful. And I just, I didn't want to miss Katrina Halasa and her group, and I don't remember all the chaperones from Kent and from Bookto CLC and some other place, but just, thanks. Not good sleep tonight.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a lot of, a lot of events happen. I know that the Allski Musical happened in the last few weeks. It gave hundreds of kids opportunities to be on stage at the Akron Civic. All of our graduations, all of our ceremonies, it's been an amazing month to be any part of Akron Public Schools and in any way represented the district, so we're very grateful for that. We have no need for executive session for the first time, I think, since I think...
So move.
I think that was your roll call. Would you like to properly take roll call?
Sure.
All right.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to text Jason Hawes and tell him I'm here.